Hi, Tim.
Hey, Matthew.
I think she's memorizing some numbers.
Alright, you got those speakers on? Good morning, everyone. We gonna call our second meeting of July, Dord. We gonna ask that if you will, put your phones on vibrator or turn them off. Ask that Supervisor Gerald Steen leads us in the prayer. And Mr. Will Slaugh leads in the prayers, please.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we just thank you for this morning, Lord. We thank you for the rain that you've given us, Lord, and the blessings that you've already given us, Lord, that we do not even know and consider daily. But Father, as we come and make decisions for Madison County, Lord, we just ask that you give us the knowledge and the wisdom, Lord, to make the right and the best decision. But most of all, make decisions that's pleasing to you. Father, I pray for our country, Lord, as we go through several different items, Lord, things that is very harmful to us, Lord, as far as inflation, as far as wars overseas, and as far as the divide within our own country, Lord. We just ask that your hand would be upon each one of us, Lord, to come together as one and to make this country the very best, Lord, that would always be pleasing in your sight. But Father, we just thank you for being our Lord and Savior. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, before we get into our agenda here, I was advised that when our election commission, district five, Rem Lacy, that his wife went on to heaven yesterday. So let's keep the family in mind as we go through today, next week. Pray for him. Alright, from there, we'll go to Ronnie Lott.
Yes, Mr. President, you have before you the-
Good to see you back, Ronnie.
Thank you, good to be back and alive. Before you, you have before you the July the 5th, 2022 board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, please approve said minutes.
Make a motion for approval.
Alright, got a motion by Trey Second, by Gerald. Is discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's it? Alright, we move down to concerned citizen. Let's do the one that's here on agenda first. I thank you out of what Sheila Span. Is she here?
I'm here.
Alright, Ms. Sheila, come up to the mic and tell us what you got going on. Matter of fact, tell you where you live at. You don't have to give your address, but at least give your street.
My name is Sheila Span. I am a pharmacist and a diabetes educator. Been working in Canton for the past 20 years at Merritt Health Medical Center, right here in Canton. Just to give you a short story of myself, 12 years ago, I received a kidney transplant. And I am thankful to the Lord for my donor. And coming in August, Team Mississippi is made up of donors who will be participating in Olympic Games. The Olympic Games is going to contain all states. All states will have donors will be participating in these Olympic Games. And I'll be doing the 5K, the bowling and golfing. If I had never had this kidney, I would not be standing up here with you today. I was on dialysis for about five years. And so that was a challenge to me. And some of y'all might not even know what it is to be an organ donor. And so I want to ask Belinda Lane for MORA just to explain what it's all about. I guess what I would like for the Madison County to support us, our team, when we get ready to go to the games. If we get a donation, your name will be on our shirts, on all the marketing that we have that will be done on that day. There'll be signs up saying who all our supporters are. And I certainly, I live here in Madison County. We was in Heinz County about three weeks ago. And we got a donation from them. And certainly, I pray that we get a donation from you all and your prayers. And again, I appreciate you giving us this few minutes just to represent who we are. Okay, Belinda?
Let me start by saying good morning to each of you. I represent MORA, which is Mississippi Organ Recovery Agency. Along with that, I too am from Madison County, and I support Team Mississippi. When I say Team Mississippi, I'm talking about the Olympics team that represents not only Madison County, but the state of Mississippi in the Olympic goals. This year, they will be going to San Diego, California, to represent us. And so they are asking, of course, for your participation in this goal for them. Again, Ms. Span has shared her story, and we have so many stories that we can share. Just this morning, I checked my email and found the story of a 57-year-old donor. A few weeks ago, you all probably heard about Officer Croom. Officer Croom, in his death, continues to be a giver. Officer Croom was an organ donor. So I'd like to share that even in death, it's folks like that who help continue to give the gift of life. And we encourage all of you to become organ, eye, and tissue donors, if you have not already. But also today, we would like to encourage you to be a part of what the vision that Team Mississippi has. Thank you.
I'd like to ask that each one of y'all get, I left a packet. Any of y'all have any questions about what you received on Friday?
This packet, this magazine?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Inside, there is information about the donation contribution.
I'm like Sheila, this is my first time seeing it. Ask you if you dropped it off Friday, it didn't get to us till this morning. At first, I want to say thank you, old lady, for what y'all do. And good to see you here from having a transplant that lets you know that it do work and it worked a long time.
Yes, sir.
It worked a long time.
Matter of fact, I have served here, right here in Canton, treating many of the diabetes patients, right here in Canton. And so my heart is with Canton.
Okay. Let me make sure I'm getting what you're, what you're asking, Phil. You are asking Madison County to donate to your organization.
Right, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
The Team Mississippi.
Yes, sir. There are different categories on the, on the page.
$5,000, $2,000, $1,000, $250.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Can I just explain?
Yeah.
You want me to go up there?
Yeah, go up there.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Yeah.
I'd like to just offer a clarification and information to Ms. Span. Ms. Span, thank you for coming. You got a very important story with me with MORA. MORA is a well thought of, notable, important organization. I think they should be supported, but she used the wrong word. The word donation is a red flag for a local government like ours. An individual can give a donation, but a government entity or a county like ours, we're prohibited from giving a, what they call a donation. Donation means giving something for free, giving away taxpayer monies and getting nothing back. It's a donation which is impermissible under Mississippi law. So we can't give a donation now. So to a nonprofit, to a 501(c)(3), to anybody like that. However, there's a way to do it, and that is to get something back. So if this board will consider a contribution for this purpose with the, with the return of something valuable to the board, which might be an ad in this book or something publication connected to MORA that helps people around the world know what Madison County is all about and that we could say is equal to the donation or the contribution we made, you could do that. But just to give something and get nothing back, you can't do it.
Ms. Span, may I ask you this? Have, I know you operate and been putting forth a whole lot of help here in Madison County. Have you reached out to any other county on this?
Yes, sir. We were, we were at the Board of Supervisors in Jackson.
Come up to the mic, come up to the mic.
We had a meeting with the Board of Supervisors in Jackson, and they made a contribution of $2,000.
Heinz County did?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that was my idea. Certainly, if they did it. Certainly, if they did it, hopefully that Madison County would do the same.
Alright, Mike, you finish?
I said you can do it, but it's got to be an ad in a booklet or something like that.
I think at some point, we need to sit down as a, as a board and look at, we get these kinds of requests all the time. And we need to prioritize what we really are interested in supporting. Not that anybody is any less than the other, but we only have so much money, and it is taxpayer money. So for the future, I think at least, we need to seriously get a plan together for us.
Alright, these ladies are asking right now. And I hear that a neighboring county have committed $2,000. So I don't know what the direction of the board is, but I'm gonna make the offer, the motion that we match Madison, I mean Heinz County, $2,000 with $2,000 donating to this, not donating, changing that word, taking a $2,000 ad. Would that, would that be it, Mike?
Yes.
$2,000 ad?
Well, ask Heath, ask Heath if he could help us with this. Okay. I'll second your motion then, as long as Heath Hall can help us with putting together the ad that advertises county resources. Basically, that's what you have to do. Okay? And, and I'll second that motion for the $2,000 ad. Okay?
Got a motion by myself, second by Carl. Any other discussion? And, uh, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
No. And the reason I say no is exactly what Supervisor Sheila Jones said, is that we have others to come, and we turn them down as well. This is a great cause, not issue with that at all, just like on the others. It's just that, you know, we need to come together as one to see if we're going to do this to start with on any, instead of two, or three, four coming back up, you know, the next two or three months and ask it. That's the only reason. It's a great cause.
Right, it needs to be in our budget.
Ms. Span, get my cell phone from that gentleman sitting right there and call me.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It, it was denied, barely 2-2. It don't go nowhere. It was basically denied. Alright, next, moving on to, it's heart association. You heart, you heart, heart association?
I don't know if they showing up.
They heart association.
Unique, unique hardest. I think they just, they gather, I don't know what this request is on this room.
They don't have no, nothing on it?
Why don't we, why don't we since-
Hold on, let me make sure.
I noticed, no, I noticed, yeah, hold them up. And since we've got Commissioner Simmons here, I would respectfully say that let's move to that business item. His time is, is very valuable. And I'd like to just move right into that.
Listen, any other concerned citizen, just hold on here. We got Highway Commissioner here. Y'all might want to hear what he's saying anyway, so you probably live in his Highway Commissioner District. So Highway Commissioner Willie Simmons, come on and take state.
Good morning.
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 Chairman Griffin, to members of the board, let me say how much I appreciate you all allowing me to stop by this morning to say hello to you and kind of give you an update as to what we've been doing with Department of Transportation and how Madison County fit into all of what we're attempting to do. Want to thank you for your support and all the things that you have done. I have with me this morning, my staff, the Chief Engineer, Neil Patterson, who takes care of this area, and he's a guy with that khaki pants on and shirt on. He's the guy when you can't get ahold of me, is the one who gonna make sure it happens. And even when you can't get ahold of me, I'm going to give him a call and say, Neil, what should we doing? And what are we doing? And when we gonna get it done? And his answer is right away. Also, the young lady who you talk to all the time, Kayla Williams, who is our assistant for this area, and Sir Jonah Ruppam. Sir Jonah came on since we were last here with you at this meeting. But just quickly, to say to you that Department of Transportation, this year, we are very appreciative of the state legislature and what they did. They did not do any earmarks. They also was very grateful in giving us some additional monies this year. Our total budget this year is at about $1.4 billion. That is the highest that we have ever had any time that I've been able to talk to anyone to say how much money you receive. Even when I was chairman of the Budget Committee of the State Senate, we never could get up to $1.4 billion. But with the money that we receive from the administration, President Biden, and Congress out of DC, along with the money that the legislature put in, brought us to the $1.4 billion. What that $1.4 billion consisted of was some additional money for maintenance, about $40, $3 million for that. We also had $40 million put in for match, and then $35 million put in for what we call capacity building. And we're going to utilize that $35 million to help us plan and do some pre-construction kind of things to get some other major projects together. We also received $100 million for the Emergency Ruin and Bridge Program. And I believe you all had a bridge here in Madison County that you received some monies for the Yandell, am I saying it right?
Yandell, yes.
Okay, Yandell Bridge. You approved for that particular project. So we're very pleased to, to report to you that we did that on last Tuesday. And that money should be coming to you so that you can move that project. We gave you a handout, and I won't go through all of that handout, but you can see some of the projects that we have done. And Madison County, again, has fared well in that total amount. When you look at the amount of monies that we have put into STP projects, about $7.5 million. Some other infrastructure projects for a total of about, I'm sorry, $19.1 million. And then $3.3 million for other special projects, and $28 million for LPA and projects like that that you have received. The one I want to bring your attention to is the second page, down at the bottom, where we talk about projects planning 2020 through. And we don't know when those projects will be completed. But everybody that we meet with, when we meet with Mike Espy and Gerald, they always jumping up and down on us about various projects. But that's not just them. When we meet with Carl Banks. So you have a group of individuals here and a chairman who are constantly harassing the commissioner. I thought I was taking a position that was just going to be kind of an easy path. But those individuals have my cell number, and it's not the MDOT cell number, it's my person's cell number. And they call me 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. Mike Espy is one of the worst of it. But we always-
I didn't have it given to me your number.
But we always-
If you don't squeak, you don't get it.
You don't get it. But we always accept that, and, and we understand. We understand why Paul Griffin would call me any time, day or night, because he is committed to Madison County. But I wanted to lay that out in front of you to just kind of look at and let you know that we have put into our three-year plan, and we have put into all of our projects, a total of about $148 million for Madison County that you will see. And it's Highway 22, but the big project that you all have talked about is the connector, about $34.5 million that we have in there now. And then the winding of Highway 463 from Gustav. That's about a $50 million project that we have now. And I keep saying "now" because of inflation, and you know what that means. Because of the cost of everything, our costs keep going up, and we are having to delay projects sometime and rebuild them because of that. But we are committed to working with you to get these projects done because it's so important to the growth of central Mississippi and Madison County. In closing then, let me say, because of inflation, and although we applaud the legislature for what they did in 2022, when you see some members of the legislature, thank them for what they did. But also remind them that we need additional money. And one of the things that we need so desperately is recurring dollars. The $35 million, for instance, that we put in, and we're going to utilize that for pre-construction in all of these projects, or many of these projects that we have, we're going to be able to do. But many of these projects is going to depend upon continuing to get dollars. And recurring dollars is important that we need. As you well know, we haven't had an increase in monies other than the lottery since 1987. And the inflation cost and the cost of doing things have tripled, tripled, tripled. And we can't do projects like we have done in the past without additional money. So again, thank the legislature, but let them know that they need to figure out a way. And we are not in no way saying that we need to increase, increase the fuel tax at the pump. We paying too much now for gas. But there are other ways, and we can come up with a way of getting recurring dollars that come into our system so that we can maintain a good infrastructure system for the state of Mississippi and central Mississippi, and in particular here, along the I-55 corridor and the 20 corridor, and other projects that we need to do. Let me end that by saying thank you again, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions if you have any.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Just so you know, I can't, I live in the east side of Madison. So I come up 51 all the time, and yes, we had a wreck there today, and we were all backed up trying to get up, or I was trying to get up here. So yes, we need some help. And I also want to know, do you, do you have anything to do with Reunion Parkway?
Have anything to do with reunion?
Uh-huh.
We do.
Yay. So everybody's asking me, where are we? What's the status? Where are we and what is the case?
And I told you, I had this guy called Neil. Neil?
Actually, he can answer that, but I can't.
We need to get this in the paper, because people are asking me, where are we? You know, the, I feel sorry for the people that live over there, like in that neighborhood back over there on Yandell. They can't get out of there. I mean, they really can't. It's terrible.
The Reunion Parkway, I believe it's item 29 on, under consent today, has a request for, it's a right-of-way permit, which is one of the last steps we need in order to get permission from MDOT to put a bridge over there right away. So we're getting very close on that project.
This is the mall, the east side. We're stuck. We can only get to the Kroger. We can't get anywhere else.
You can get to the food.
Commission, we wants to-
He had, he had better news than I had, okay?
Thank you for coming here and giving this board an update. I know you stepped in a room uninvited that could be hostile sometime when their project is not moving forward. But we want to thank you for stepping up to the plate. I do see Highway 16 from Canton, two cars is on here, but it's in the red. I don't know what that mean, but I got some constituents in here that that travels that road. So can you explain what that in that red on Highway, that's on the second page?
Second page?
Yeah, Highway 16 paving from 43 Leek to Leek County line. That 43 would be right here in Canton to Leek County.
And you said it's on the second page or the first page?
Uh, yeah. It's stated, let, the let date would be April 2024. Yeah.
Okay, I got you. I got you. I'm sorry. Okay, what that mean? Okay. It's in red because it's going to be what we, we identify paving projects in two categories, lottery and STP. The STP is the dollars that we get down from the federal government, and we put a match with it and move it. That project, we will let based upon the plan that we have now, April 2024. And it's a $4.3 million project. We organize the projects based upon what we consider to be the need in the way of projects in the district in the way of needing paving, and then based upon the dollars that we have. So this one is 2024. I think Neil is looking at that. Is that one of the projects we looking at to move it up?
Move it up.
Yeah.
Please move it up.
We're trying, we're trying to move that project up to 2023.
Good. Alright.
Right.
We, we-
We had a, we had a meeting on this one last, this one, well, there's others, last week as a matter of fact. And it was one of the projects that we wanted to see if we can move it to 2023.
Alright, if you don't believe it needed, get in your truck and drive with the car.
Well, I know it needed.
It'll bump you to death.
I know it's needed. But it's, it's a, it's a pecking order, need and dollars.
We understand.
So if we, for instance, if we, if we weren't in the inflation rate that we are in, it would have been in the 2023 project. But because of the cost running up, it, it was, it was put into 2024. But we are looking at moving it back to 2023 as a project. And when you look at 2023, it's fiscal year 2023, which is the year that we are in now. Yeah, the fiscal year.
Mr. President, I got one question. The intersection of Bozeman and 463, I understand you guys have a plan for reconditioning these intersections. Is it Colony Crossing? And I wanted to see if I could get an email at some point and pretty soon in the future, to figure out when it could be repaved and restriped.
Bozeman and-
463 at Colony Crossing.
We have a project right now that we're overlaying 463 from where the two-lane ends all the way to 51.
All the way to 55? All the way to 51? Okay, when's that, is that contract already lit?
Heinz should be up now. They're, you know, they're going to be starting on the fair.
Okay.
We're working on sidewalk out there now. I believe there's some sidewalk paving. They're doing, replacing some sidewalks.
Okay.
And they're doing mostly at night, but yeah, you should spend the next few weeks, like a month. It's just for the contractor, they have a lot of work right now. We've had a lot of work. So they're, they're pretty flushed, and I believe they're hoping to get out there in the next month or so. So y'all should start. But it's all at night. They'll be doing all the work at night.
Okay, thank you.
Have you, I also noticed you, you're going to be doing Highway 22?
Yes, sir.
The five-lane portion of Highway 22 into- The five-lane portion of Highway twenty-two into, uh, fifty-one also is, uh, dated, um, seven twen- uh, twenty twenty-two. So I guess you're gonna be doing Highway twenty-two as well.
That one should be, that one should be let this year.
Yeah.
We actually tried to let it already, and the bids come in too high.
Yeah.
We had to re-advertise and rela- maybe it might be on this month's late.
Yeah, greedy, greedy people. Well, I also wanted to thank you all for the portion of Highway twenty-two you did from, uh, the five-lane area out to four sixty-three. That helps, uh, I, I, I drive that, uh, highway twice a day, at least at a minimum. And I really, really appreciated it, certainly needed it, and it's, it's done well. Thank you very much.
Supervisor, Supervisor Banks did not only give me a call, he came to my office on that one.
Yes, I did.
So President Griffin, look like, look like we, we've taken care of everybody but you.
I'm gonna have to come to your office, I believe.
We, we, we are seriously, we are looking at that particular project to see if we can't move it into the, this fiscal year. It's just a matter of the dollars making that work. Because we don't want to come and tell you, we doing something, and the dollars want to allow us to do it, and we give you and your constituents hope, and it doesn't play out that way. So we want to make sure that we can fill it into it and make it work.
Mr. Commissioner, appreciate you coming. Appreciate you taking my phone calls as well.
Yes, sir.
We've had several conversations, and, uh, and most of them have been about the widening of Interstate fifty-five, which I'm assuming that's what this is on this agenda.
Exactly.
That, uh, the contract will be let January of this coming year then. Is that the way I read that?
Is that what I said? That's, it's an unknown, it's an unknown let date, I believe.
It's unknown.
It says unknown. Well, I, I'm just talking about the I fifty-five Madison Connector widening. What is that? I thought that was, might have been the widening of the interstate from four sixty-three to, to the, to the interchange.
Yes, sir. Right now, we don't have a let date. We're working on getting plans together and stuff, and, uh, we're gonna apply for a raise grant for that.
But it got let date on one, on one twenty twenty-three.
What page you?
Second page. I just, I'm just gonna confirm that, actually.
Starting. I don't see a let date on the I fifty-five widening from four sixty-three to the Gustav. My says unknown.
Thirty-four point three million.
We got, we got, we. That's not the one on, um. Oh, okay. So that's the connector, that's for going on, uh, what is that, the river beside, uh, Sam's right there? It's part of the split diamond, the old split diamond project?
Yeah.
And we'll be wide in it from the interstate over to fifty-one.
Madison Avenue?
But that's a potential for the city of Madison buying right of way and moving utilities, and they've done neither.
Oh, my.
So that will be done.
We know about them, Ken.
The city of Madison, the city of Madison buys the, uh, right of way and moves utilities.
Yeah. That's right.
We have the plans done, it's sitting there waiting on them to, to buy.
That's been there for a while, though, hasn't it?
Yes, sir, it has.
Ten years or longer?
Yeah, I, I don't.
Ten or twelve?
Five years.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been there, it's been there for a while. But basically, I know we talked about the widening of the interstate, you know, from, uh, four sixty-three to the interchange, in which the reunion interchange is the one that we're building.
That's the fifty million always down, always down to the bottom?
Yeah, and that's one I do not see a let date on.
Right.
Yes, sir. We don't have funding.
We can't, we can't let all of these dates without no money.
Well, we, we building that interchange. We moving forward with it, and we are hoping that we can connect to the interstate as soon as that interchange built. Uh, so if you will, y'all just look at that again and, and, um, you know, and see, see how we can make that work because we moving forward with it. Uh, and that's gonna help traffic tremendously, you know, in the, in the area of Bozeman Road and the west side of the interstate, actually.
Yeah.
So.
And again, these are, these are, these are all in our plan?
Yes, sir.
But all of it, I won't say all of it, a lot of it is continued upon our getting additional dollars.
Well, I've been doing my part. I buy a lot of a ticket every time. Three or four times a week, you know, so I'm doing my share.
Got a lot going on in Madison County.
We are.
Sure do. And thank you for your help.
Commissioner, before you leave, you said, I think I didn't get the name. You called out one of your staff that is assisting here in Madison County. Who, who you say that is?
Doug Johnson? Or the, or the person who, Neil Patterson? Neil is the, uh.
Gentlemen with the glasses on behind you?
One with glasses on, Sir Jonathan Rucker.
Okay. Uh, Greg, will you make sure you get his cell phone now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Well, that's all, that's all my question. Any more question, board member? There's not?
I don't have any. We'll phone, we'll phone call away anytime y'all need us, let us know.
I got you.
The staff, the staff is committed to working with you, and we are committed to making things happen. But do say to the legislature, we do need the recurring dollars so that we can make all of these projects work.
You're right. I totally agree.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
We're gonna house guard, so we're gonna leave y'all.
I'm glad you came to us first.
Yeah.
They'll be there.
All right. Next, let's go back to our consent, not consent, uh, concerned citizen. Uh.
We have three on the list, yes, sir. The first is Reverend Jimmy Jobe.
Reverend Jobe, if you will, come up and. All right. Come right up in the mic and, and. Tell us, tell us what we got going on.
All right.
And tell me what Jobe you are again?
Kendrick Jobe.
With, who are your mom and daddy? That's your dad?
It's my, my uncle.
Uncle.
Willie Jobe. The late, the late Willie Jobe is my father.
All right.
Uh, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, we're, we're here, uh, speaking on the conditions of, uh, Cawthon Road. It's a five-mile road, runs off Highway forty-three from, uh, Highway forty-three till Fire Tower Road. Um, Cawthon Road, uh, it's been a, a, a recurring, uh, theme of, uh, the people, the, uh, the road crew who comes out to, uh, repair the road, uh, they come out about once every two months or so, and they patch a few holes. And, uh, the holes, uh, they'll last, uh, until we get a good rain and they, and they, uh, it's back to, back to, uh, square one. And the, uh, road, the, the conditions on the road are so bad now that the patching doesn't even help anymore. It's, it's, it's really a waste of time to patch it. It's, the road is beyond patching. It's just, uh, we're here because we, uh, have about twenty or so, uh, citizens who live on the road, and the wear and tear it has on our vehicles, uh, the wear and tear it has on my vehicle. Uh, I, I proudly, uh, served the county as a deputy. I proudly worked for, uh, Mister, uh, Mister, uh, Sheriff Tucker there. And, uh, and it's wear and tear on my, on my, uh, patrol vehicle. And I, I leave to come and work to patrol early because the road is so bad that I always say, if you live on Cawthon Road, you have to leave fifteen minutes late, fifteen minutes early just to be late because the road is, is really, really, really in bad condition. And we're just here speaking, uh, we just wanted to bring that to you all's attention. If there's anything that could be done other than just patching it every couple of months, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Jobe, for coming.
Yes, sir.
Thank all y'all. Uh, all what you just said is true. Uh, but we, right now, we don't have an answer for Cawthon Road. Uh, Lawrence Morris that, uh, work in the engineering department, we talked about it Thursday, what we gonna do for Cawthon Road. They probably gonna try something, uh, other than resurfing it because like you said, you said five miles, I believe it might be seven mile long. How much? Oh, right in between there, in between both of us. Uh, that's, that's a lot of road, lot of money. But we need to do something because the patching of it is making it worse because the bump, bump, bump.
Yes.
Uh, it might be best to leave the hole. So, Cornelius, step to the mic, bud. No, not you, babe, not you. I'm gonna give you the opportunity. I'm talking about our road manager right behind. Don't leave, don't leave yet, Ms. Jobe, you can stand up there by.
Okay.
Well, what I'm gonna do, I'll go look at that road tomorrow and see what we need to do. Like I said, patch it. I don't think I'd best say we gonna try to grade it down and see if they're gonna help. But pretty much, you're gonna end up going back to a gravel road until we can be able to do surface on it.
Uh, if you grade it down, uh, uh, and then look at it and check with Tim, see could, uh, 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 a DBST doing it again, would that give them some, some help other than asphalt?
Well, I don't think about it, uh, we can do it again, but you know, soon we do it.
A log truck, we know they.
A log road, that what they gonna turn to, so it ain't gonna do us no good if the DBST on for a short while.
It might give them three or four years of some release, though. Right now, they asking for some release, period.
We can try.
Tim, can you and, uh, Cornelius and Lawrence work on that?
Sure.
And, uh.
The DBST will work except for the heavy weighted the log trucks. That's, that's the, uh, limiting factor on the DBST. Other than that, it would be a great alternative.
Yeah, that, that asphalt wouldn't even last no time coming.
Not just a thin overlay, it wouldn't, sir.
Is logging going on right now?
I don't think there's any going on right now.
If not, they'll be on there next week after rain.
Okay.
There's some logging going on now?
There's a major log road.
Okay. So it's always logging going on? There's no other way to reroute them or, or cut them off?
Well, you can reroute them, but all you're gonna do, tap another road, so.
Go tap two roads, yeah.
So that's the main road, they're always logging on that road.
You can't send them up to Tyler County. Well. We wish. Okay.
Is there no way for us to get the loggers to pay for part of the dam, or the damage that they, that the damage that they?
Nah. If it was up to me, I would make every logger put a barn up on the roads. Now, when we were doing it years ago, it helped our whole lot. Because for one, when you put a barn on the road, people be very careful because they don't want to pay for tamming damage to the road. Now, loans, there ain't no barn on it, they just drive in a kind of way, fly down the road. And so that what you got with that. So if we're barn on the roads like it used to be, it would help our whole lot.
Okay, well, that's good information, guys.
Why don't we stop bunding them?
I think our lawyer got that answer.
We tried. We tried, remember?
Yeah, it probably gonna be illegal and everybody in the country.
It was a Allo meeting, and representatives from the trucking industry, the logging industry, the legislature, they came to the room, and they explained why we shouldn't do it, and there was a vote taken, and it wasn't done, so. It's not legal, actually.
Okay.
That was in twenty thirteen, I think, twenty fourteen.
Something like that.
That, that we, that we, we were fighting for the back roads right then, way back, trying to get something out of, out of the big trucks. But we kind of got stepped on by other different, bigger agencies than us because what we do affect the whole state of Mississippi.
Okay.
Uh.
Well, same, we did the same thing back in the nineties, too. And of course, uh, the legislature was getting ready to do something, and the logging industry came and brought all the log trucks into Jackson and surrounded the capital, and they backed off as well. Uh, it's, it's just one of those issues that they say that they have the right to harvest their crop. And we can't do anything about that. So we just have to be more vigilant on what we do in terms of maintaining a road that they're using. It's, uh, it's just one of those things. But we can do a better job than what we are doing. Uh, because we just have to understand that that is a logging road, and we just need to pay more attention to it on a regular basis, uh, because it's gonna get torn up.
Yeah, go to tour.
And fix it as quickly as we can because you're being hurt by that.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I know we ain't giving you the, you all the answer that you want, but I'm gonna keep it in mind and make the, the road manager and the engineer, uh, pay more attention to the Cawthon Road. Because I know y'all up here on Lee County, and you all have to stay at the end of Cawthon Road. So you had to travel the whole road just to get to, to the Jobe's house. Uh, I feel your pain, and I'm gonna do what I can for you. But I have to look out, uh, uh, for the best use of the taxpayer money. Uh, going up there, overlaying it with asphalt, it ain't gonna last no longer than the DBST will. Uh, and the DBST, it costs less than asphalt. That's what I'm saying, saying. We might look at DBST in again because it gonna get tore up after the next two or three, uh, loggers come in there anyway, and we have to come in there and do something else to it. Uh. Like, if you guys, anything else you want, well, we gonna work on it. And I thank you, Ms. Jobe, finally get to meet who you are now. We didn't talk on the phone several times. You know, we know your dad, uh, even the rail back there. Uh, I'm gonna do what I can for you, and I believe this boy gonna help you out, too.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right.
All right.
Who else got, uh, Greg?
I don't have in, any other concerned citizens.
All them was on Cawthon Road?
Mm-hmm.
All right. No public here, but now we gonna move to consent item.
Mr. President, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the consent items with the, with the exception of item thirty. I would like to remove it for further discussion.
All right. Motion by Gerald, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President, on item thirty, uh, I would ask for Tim and Mike to help with this. Basically, this situation with a tree removal of a tree on Lake Cavalier, uh, and, uh, it's been going on now for a month, and the tree has been removed. But I did receive a text from a gentleman there asking us to look at a dead tree on the right of way. Uh, and, uh, and that's when I touched base with Tim to have his, uh, to go out and look at it. And, uh, Tim, if you will, just step up and kind of take it from there and fill us in. And, and this is really for good information for the board to make a decision, hopefully to move forward, but, you know, from a, from a different standpoint, we probably need to look at a policy as well. But Tim?
All right. The, the concerned citizen in question, um, contacted Supervisor Steen on the Monday that we were all headed to, uh, the supervisors convention. So I got my assistant to go out and look at the tree, and he said, yes, it, it is dead. I believe Cornelius got one of his assistants to do it as well, and they both confirmed that the tree was dead. I get back that, uh, Friday morning, and I'm able to go look. And at that point, the tree has been removed, and, um, so I'm able to see where the stump is. And yes, the stump location is on, on right of way. Now, the, the part that happened in the middle is we were discussing with Mr. Di several times over that, uh, three or four-day period, and he was very concerned that the tree was going to fall and damage his fence or potentially his, uh, his house. So he elected to go ahead and have the tree removed, uh, before I was able to get back and look at it. So that's not our normal procedure. Our normal procedure would be for us to go out and look at it, get two quotes, hire a contractor if needed, and take the tree down. But in this situation, it was a little weird in that, uh, most of us were out of town for that week.
Tree, trees normally don't die overnight. Did he, he just saw it on Monday and had to have it cut on Tuesday?
I can't answer that one.
I was struck by lightning.
Oh, okay.
No, there were two in the backyard that were struck by lightning, this one was, was dead. He, he was having the two in the backyard cut, and while he was, while the tree guy was there, he got him to cut the one in the, in the front.
Okay.
It, it, it's really, uh, I guess, a situation that y'all wasn't here in town, and he, he already had. Tree cutters coming to his house to cut the two in the, in the back. And this one, um, he thought was, and it was on county wa- uh, right of way.
It was, and it was dead.
Concerned whether it's going to fall or not, and, and he went ahead and, and cut it without anyone giving him permission. Is that correct?
We took, I told him that if he wanted to cut the tree, and it was either on, if it was on right of way, if it was determined to be on right of way, then yes, he had. He had permission to cut the tree as long as the, uh, tree cutter was licensed and bonded. Um, there was no indication that we would pay for that, but he asked if we, he had our permission to do so.
Yeah, and I think that's where the confusion come in at is, he thought that, uh, the county was giving him the okay to go ahead and cut the tree while he had. The tree cutters there, and, and that's the reason he come back and asked, I think, uh, you know, to pay, and so. Um, you know, I think it was a misunderstanding to a degree while we were all out, out of town at the association meeting, you know, as well, and I think that was the biggest issue. Um, but anyway, I'm going, you know, I'm going to make a motion for approval. Um, with the understanding what went on, uh, but I do think that we probably need to move forward with a written policy. If we do not have one at this point.
Okay.
Um, so I'm going, I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Can I ask, add one thing, on, there was a invoice attached to that, and that invoice had the dollar figure for all three trees. This is just for the one tree that's on right of way, so it's not the full amount of that invoice.
Yep.
No.
Do you have a cost on it?
Two thousand.
Two thousand right there?
But it one tree.
For the one tree.
Wow.
Well.
I think it was a little high.
It is high.
Here, here's my thoughts on it is, uh. I think we have a procedure, I don't know if it's a policy or not, uh, of getting two, uh, three. Quotes on bringing the tree down, cutting the tree down, and we did not use it, so. That's where I'm going to be looking to support it, because we didn't go through our normal, uh, procedures. Uh, but we have a motion, is there a second?
And, and that's the reason I pulled it off of the agenda as well, because the board needs to, you know, really understand it, because. Last thing we want to do is have five more come in front of us at the next board meeting, asking the same thing. And, and even though I'm going to support it, because I've been know what's going on the last month with this. And I think, I just think it was a misunderstanding on both of our parts, the county and his. And, uh, but he went ahead and, and had it cut, you know, on his own, the, you know, the way that I look at it.
And he wasn't told by Tim that he'd get paid for it, Tim just said, hey, he can cut it.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it, uh.
It, it, yes, that's true.
That's, uh.
But the way the email read from Tim, I misread it.
Yeah.
To mean that, go ahead and cut it, we'll pay for it. That's what I read, but Tim didn't say that exactly.
I believe each of you have the, the email string of all the contact that was between the two.
He thought he had permission to cut it and the county would pay for it.
The, the landlord did.
The landlord thought.
And, and that's the only reason I'm making a motion, that's the only reason I'm making a motion for approval, because there, there's real confusion there. Uh, on our part and on the others' part, but anyway, that's my motion, Mr. President.
All right, we got a motion?
I received, I, I had read something and received something prior to, I believe, the cutting of the tree, because I, I went ahead and, and forwarded on to you, Tim. Uh, from someone else, uh, that, that was interested, I think, I thought it was the same tree we're talking about. But it's, I don't know if it was this individual that ended up getting it cut. Um, so I didn't know it was even down, and I guess I've been out of town, so I haven't been really paying a lot of attention to emails. Um, so I hadn't read how that email was worded, but it's, it, I don't know. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm counting on a quandary here, because more so with the cost of the. Cutting the tree down, uh, I, I didn't see the tree, so I don't know how big it was, but it must have been.
Could that offer a solution maybe?
Yeah, it might, it must be a mighty big tree though.
It, it was, it was a big tree, the stump was anyway.
Yeah, this is unusual, because we do have a policy. Policies that, uh, first of all, we're responsible for maintenance of right of way, you know that. If it's a dead tree or a tree falling in the road or whatever, usually the landlord will call us or the. Road crew will see it and take care of it, if that means cutting it or whatever, we'll do it. In this particular case, um, there was a lightning that struck this man's two trees in his yard. And I thought he also struck a tree, but Tim says no, but the tree was rotten. But there are thousands of rotten trees maybe on right of way in Massacre County.
It sure is.
All right, Tim was out of town. And this individual communicated with engineer and said, do I have permission to? I got a tree service coming tomorrow, there's three dead trees, could we cut it? And the email came back, and you can read it, I, I read it the way Tim said he wrote it, and he said, uh. You're permission to come on our right of way to cut it. And that guy, and he said, uh, you have permission to come on our right of way and cut it as long as you is a bonded tree service. So reading that, the individual very likely thought that that gave task and approval. For him to use his tree service to cut it, and when he says you's a bonded guy, that he assumed that meant we'd pay for it. But it didn't mean that, he didn't say that exactly, but that's what this guy thought he meant. So, uh, but Tim did dispatch his staff to determine if the tree was on our right of way and it was rotten. And they determined, yes, it's on our right of way, and yes, it's rotten, so it probably would have been cut at some point. Our process is to go through the bid procedure, and our process is that tree was very close to an energy power line. And he would have called energy to see if energy would cut it for free, that's what we would have done, but wouldn't have cost us anything. All right, but what's done is done. Uh, I think two thousands, you know, I mean, we know what it costs to cut trees. Um, it was a six thousand dollar bill, our tree was third of that. Uh, I think, I think that a reasonable person with experience in cutting trees. Uh, would, could give a figure that may be lower than that, you know, what would it cost us normally, come out and cut that tree, and then that's what I would offer. That's what I would offer him, I'd pay for it, since it was confusion, he did reach out to us before the tree was cut. There was confusion, email was vague, and it's cut, and so I would, I'd recommend to go ahead and do it. But not to pay that amount, do whatever's reasonable to cut a tree.
Mike, can we, uh, can we make this decision legally without getting another estimate? I mean, is that, can we do that, because now my thinking is, my motion should be just go half of it and just, since there's confusion on both, both sides.
It was confusing. Um, jail is already done, and I'm saying if a reasonable tree cutting person or. An engineer or road crew person who cuts trees and knows what things cost to cut.
Right.
Uh, that's what I would offer.
Well, Mr. President, I'm going to change the motion then to pay up, up to one thousand dollars.
All right.
For that removal of that tree.
Got a motion by Gerald?
That, the, yes. This particular tree wasn't struck by lightning, it died on its own naturally, right?
Yeah.
It did.
In fact, the gentleman thinks that when energy came through there and sprayed along their thirty foot section that they maintained, that they killed the tree. He said they killed a maple or something in his yard also that he had removed.
So, I mean, it could have been out there dead for months and months, and then.
Probably was.
It probably was.
Well, where was the, where was the, all of a sudden the rush, he just had a tree service coming to cut other trees and?
I think so.
I mean, y'all go up and Pandora's box, we start paying for this kind of stuff, it sounds like your email was. You can get it cut on your own if you get licensed and bonded procedures, there was never any mention of, we're going to pay you back.
Right, I, I believe what I said was, you can cut it even if it's on us.
Yes.
On the, and you didn't put R, you didn't put R O W.
Says you can get it cut even if it's on us, what he meant by on us is on our right of way.
Property.
Not out of our pocket. But that's what was said.
That's true, all right, okay.
Mr. President, that's, that's where my motion is, it's, you know.
A motion, is there a second?
Can you repeat the motion?
My motion is to pay for the tree cut up to one thousand dollars.
All right, and to verify up to one thousand dollars, you going, we going to get some estimates or something?
No, sir, I'm just going to, my motion is to pay, uh, this gentleman one thousand dollars, because, uh, it cost him two thousand. And, uh, my motion is just to pay up to a thousand.
Bit the difference, can't.
Just, just cut it in half and.
Because of the confusion.
Uh, just, just because of the confusion that we, uh, that we had on both sides, so.
Well, second that.
All right.
I don't know if I'm willing to vote for it, but I'm willing to say.
Got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl, in other discussion?
I wish that gentleman was here to talk to us.
Well, if he turning down, I believe he will.
He could be, right.
Get your wish.
You might, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
I, I think, you say we do have a written policy, Mike, or Tim on tree cut, or is it just a kind of verbal policy?
No.
I'm not aware of a written policy.
Okay.
It's just been the procedure that we have used.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have some, uh, written type policy.
Yeah, definitely, we had probably a procedure, but not, not a policy.
Yeah, that's right.
Who's district is it, Carl?
That, that's right.
I have no idea.
We can get that together?
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, uh, let's move right along now down to our election commissioner, Pat Truesdale. You up? But that might go on here. You see what they asked before they did.
Morning.
Helen Carney, election commissioner, District One.
And I'm Pat Truesdale, District Three.
All right.
We're here, and I think you have two invoices, we're here to ask for approval. For a truck to deliver our election acco- uh, equipment, and this is for November the seventh.
It's three trucks.
Three trucks.
Yes.
Sorry, for November the seventh and November the ninth, and this includes three twenty-six feet lift gate trucks. The first one is for fifteen thousand nine hundred for November the seventh and November the ninth, and then we have November the twenty-eighth and November the thirtieth. So we're here to ask for approval for both of these quotes.
Does this come with the people to do all the loading and unloading and?
No, it, it does not, and we found that it worked so much better having the folks from the road department to assist us. We personally drove the routes, went to them, had the keys, opened everything, but without that actual manpower. It's not going to get put in there where it needs to be, we can plug it up, but we can't help assist getting it off the truck ramp. And getting it pushed into the precincts, and so we need that extra manpower. We don't need but three men though per trucks, that'd be a total of nine people.
So it's to a forty-eight hour rental on three trucks for sixteen thousand with no.
With just their driver.
It's a lift truck though.
But it has the lift, yes, sir.
And this saved us, uh, over six hundred dollars from Mississippi Van Lines when we got, and they, they refused to do it from now on, but. This at least is sixteen, six hundred dollars cheaper than what Mississippi Van Lines, and Mississippi Van Lines didn't have the late lift gate gates. So this is really, anyway, I think this is.
It meets our need in a, in a better fashion than what we were getting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
And we possibly won't need them for the second hitch, we hope there won't be the need for a runoff, but we have to prepare for it.
And this is for the runoff as well, this quote?
Yes, for both elections.
If you don't need it, it'll, it'll come down.
It'll just be not spent.
Mm-hmm, it'd be half of the cost in here if you wouldn't.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second motion for, for further discussion as well.
Motion by Carl, second by Gerald, now we got further discussion?
You know, I think that, uh, you're looking at this being the truck only, with one driver, that we should look at possibly purchasing. A vehicle or two.
Absolutely.
We would love that, we think it would be.
This cost, and if we're going to use our own labor.
In a year's time, we could probably buy a truck out of the cost of three trucks we're using. It would take us a while, but I do think it overall would save the county money. And, uh, we have priced, uh, enclosed trailers that could be pulled behind county trucks and then also price the trucks. I really think a truck that's self-inclusive would be the better deal, but I'll leave that to your discretion.
Well, I, I would, uh, encourage y'all to work with the administrator and.
All right.
And just see what you come back with, I mean, it, it may not even be feasible when you get a quote, but then again, it may be.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. President.
All right now.
It is, they're, they're high, you're right, but this is as well.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, got a motion and a second, in other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Go have an election.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, who next on here, Tim, you up?
I'm going to be very brief today, I've got only one item for you. On the eighth, we received, uh, six construction bids for Sharon Road Bridge Rehab Project. Engineering Department recommends the board approve the lowest bidder Ford Ice Construction Company for one hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred, it's one hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. And also authorize board president to sign a contract.
Motion? A motion by Trey, I think, uh. I was just asking for the motion, uh, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Uh, Tim, why you up there, can, uh, you go ahead and talk on the paper that you passed out about Harper Road?
Okay, there's, Harper Road has currently been maintained for, we'll say, a third of a mile. Um, I went and looked on our two thousand road registry and found out that, yes, Harper Road is a county road. Then I went and looked on the maps associated with the two thousand road registry, and in your, uh, I guess it'll be page one of that, where I have it highlighted in yellow. Uh, this is a road located where Harper Road is actually located, but there's no name on it. So we've got a written road document that has a name on it, and we've got a map that doesn't have a name on it. And then the third page in the section is our GIS, it's just a screenshot of our GIS that, that does show Harper Road and the limits of it. So I guess what we're asking is for the board to approve that Harper Road is the ma- road on this map. Which will thus allow us to do some improvements farther on down than we've currently been maintaining.
Yeah, uh, I make that motion because I have personality that is Harper Road is Harper Road. Uh, I didn't know it was named Harper Road.
I'll second the motion, that's how we knew it was Harper Road.
All right, I made that motion second by Carl, in a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. All right, anything else, Tim?
No, sir.
Uh, where we at, fire coordinator, Norman?
Good morning, supervisors.
Good morning.
Uh, last time I was here, I had a request, uh, to, um, purchase some air packs. Eight of them would go to the town of Flora, they would be put on some county trucks that we own. And four of them would go to Camden, replace some bad pack sayer nets for a county truck also. Uh, I didn't have it, uh, I didn't have the funding for this, and y'all told me to get with the county administrator, and I have. And he has seemed to come up with, uh, funding for the purchases air packs.
Where from?
Absolutely, the funding, the, the, kind of cleanest way to do this is from the Grand Gulf Funds, uh, it's Fund O one three, it's sometimes called our cash reserve fund. But it's something we can spend on anything we levy a tax for, and because we levy a fire protection tax, we, we can pull a hundred thousand from there with no problem.
Okay, well, who we do it?
I can.
All right. Motion by Carl, second by Trey. Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. President, I would also ask them to look at the other fire departments as well.
Yes, sir, we are.
And, and see what their needs may be in this category as well.
In October, I plan on, uh, filing for a grant, a federal grant, to replace almost all our packs that are aged.
Yeah. Co, cause those things are old, old, and they're not working. We ain't doing the fireman no, no good there.
Is there, um, any way you guys could possibly look into contracting with a grant writer? Are you gonna try to write that grant yourself, or?
I would like to get a, a grant writer for it. That would be nice.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be, I mean, I'm not, that'd probably be a good idea.
And they're, they're generally 3% to 6% of the grant cost.
All right. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Uh, next is our attorney.
Thank you again. I've got two items fairly quick, hopefully. The first involves a library services contract. This is a new contract. It's substantially the same as a contract from 2009. This is a 2022 contract, which should be signed, if to be enforced, it's gotta be signed by all participants in the library system. That's the Board of Trustees of the, of the Madison County Library. That's Rizland, Madison, Flora, Canton, and Madison County. And this particular contract before you has already been signed by the library system and the mayor of Canton. I also believe it's been signed by the mayor of Rizland, and they're seeking approval of the mayor of Madison and Flora. I don't know if they have done it yet, but the contract cannot be enforced until all participants sign it. The issue between Rizland and the library system involved the content of the library, what books were in there, whatever. That's not our issue. Really, it's not anybody's issue because the library system controls the books. Placement of the books, what's in the books and whatever. And it's, it's not, it's not authorized by any participants other than the library system. Uh, the city's participation and your participation is only with regard to having a trustee on the board as well as, uh, maintaining the building. That's it. And our responsibility is maintaining the headquarters along with the city of Canton. And that's all we do. Uh, so, but I do agree that the contract should be updated because looking back at the contract, there was some tenuous issues, uh, vague about, about when the contract expired. So I agree to participate in the redraft of the contract. And it is really more specific as to when the contract expires than it says. It should be automatically renewed on its anniversary date unless one of the parties asks for review six days prior to the anniversary. That's really the only change in this contract. So it's ought to have been signed by Canton, Rizland, the library system. Whoever else signs it, they may or they may not, but for us, we were asked to sign it. I don't think there's any legal issues with it, and I recommend that we sign it.
Yeah, move we sign it.
Second.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right, thank you. The second quickly is a resolution by this board to cooperate with Holmes County Board of Supervisors and submitted an application to the USDA Rural Utilities Service for the Reconnect Program. This does not involve, uh, the Madison County broadband project with northeast Madison County. That was going forward. It's in really good shape. We met recently with Trina George, who is the director of the federal, the state office of the federal USDA rule. She came to our office and met with us on all of this. And I think our application is in good shape to be submitted in round four, which, um, is probably gonna be sometime in August. So we have yet to meet with Comcast. Comcast has our contract. Once our lawyers look at it, we'll meet with them, we'll negotiate it out, and we'll sign it. Then Comcast is the ISP is the one to actually submit the contract to USDA. So I think we're in good shape. This is different. This is cooperating with Holmes County because we're under the clear impression that if we partner with another county that may be underserved in broadband, that we will have some favor with USDA when we get our engineering together and we submit another contract, uh, application to USDA. So this is just a resolution saying that you're gonna cooperate with Holmes County to do everything necessary to get a joint application, uh, in line and situated for submission. I want to note that we pay for our part of it, and they pay for their part of it. No home, no best kind of tax dollars will be paid for any engineer for Holmes County and vice versa. So I recommend approval.
I make the motion.
All right. Carl, make the motion. I was second, uh, a little more, uh, on it. Uh, Mike, Gerald, myself, and Darren, and a few more been working hard on the broadband for northeast Madison County. And this phase two, where we connecting with Holmes County.
That include west Madison County.
Yeah, that's where we going.
Northwest Madison County.
Northwest Madison County. It gonna go up here and touch with Holmes County off of 51. And it gonna come in and take it, uh, all northwest, all the way to Flora. And we hoping by partnering with Holmes County that is a highly, uh, needed county for, uh, for broadband, that we gonna get fun, get funded northwest part of Madison County, hopefully basically free, uh, by the federal government and the state government. Uh, cause it's still a whole lot of broadband, broadband money circling around. And we trying to make sure that Holmes get their portion and we get our portion to, uh, get Madison County in the northwest part of the county broadband.
And we've already given, um, Wagner Engineer the okay to go ahead and start doing the.
Yeah.
Legwork to do this, so this goes in right in with it.
And, and it's a win-win situation. So who made that motion? You did, and I second it?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Wagner, I mean, uh, any more, uh, Mike, I guess not.
Not for me.
Moving right along to our county administrator.
Morning.
Morning.
Just two things for you today. Item 41 is a subdivision settlement participation agreement. It, it's related to the opioid settlements. When the state settles, the participants or the counties that are part of that state typically have to sign an agreement that kind of squashes the, uh, continued litigation against that one particular company. What I am also asking for is an affirmation, I guess, of something that has happened in the past. As you may notice in the attachment, it had to be signed by August 5th. There have been times in the past with these where it may not have been possible to get them in front of the board before, uh, the, the deadline. What I am asking you to do is to allow me to sign those, bring them back to you, and, you know, condition it upon, uh, Mike's approval. But in the event that there is not enough time to get these in front of the board, I would like permission to sign them. We incur no costs. There is, there are no legal fees, no, no fees of any kind as a result of these. It is issued by the state's attorney general, and it's a way for us to receive the opioid settlement. Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to make that motion, and, um, I agree with, uh, our county administrator that as long as the attorney, um, approves with what he's asked to sign, that he be allowed to go ahead and sign it. It speeds up the process, and, uh, being a just, uh, a report to us is the only thing necessary.
I'll second that motion.
You need a stamp that says Paul Griffin. I'll be gonna let Greg sign.
All right.
As the administrator.
Got a motion by Carl, second by Gerald. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say, I approve this. This is great. Just let the board know, these are the opioid cases. These are national multi-district cases. A lot of them are being settled now. And, uh, you know, we have good news here pretty soon about what amount of money we could be receiving. The AG has some. And you guys remember that, uh, months ago, you agreed to hire a New York law firm?
Right.
And they're responsible for many, many, many counties around America and states. Well, they're settling as well. And you'll also remember that you allowed me to join with them to represent you in Ohio Federal District Court there. And I'd never charged this board for my time on that case. So whenever that settles, their fee, if any, and my fee, if any, comes from the settlement, the, the fee settlement that a lawyer, that a judge was sent to pay lawyers on this case, you will get no cost from me or them on this case.
Man, that's the reason we hired you.
To make you go broke.
Thanks for that update, though, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let, let me, let me ask you the question. Why we on that, Mike? I don't know if this is the time, but if we receive some dollars from that settlement, is that those dollars gonna be earmarked for a certain thing? Or do Madison County get to spend it on what they want?
I believe so. The way, the way I'm reading, they could send decree from the attorney general. I mean, it's, it's, uh, mental health, it's healthcare, it's things that are related to, to, uh, opioid addiction. I, I think we have to do those things.
Those type things.
Yeah. And the sheriff.
Yeah. It can also be used to help, uh, supplement and help fund drug court and things of that nature over at Circuit Court and, and Youth Court.
Okay. Great. Sound great then. All right.
Sobbing potholes, you know, helps my mill help. That don't count, huh?
That don't count this time.
About to say $10,000 a bottle of money.
Yeah. Uh, I think a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you. Item 42 is a discussion concerning funding the purchase of fire trucks. A couple meetings ago, this board approved purchase of two fire trucks for approximately $929,000. There was some concern as to where the funding for that purchase was going to come from. And the answer is fire insurance rebate money. Currently, there is $412,384.69 in that fund. We receive approximately $270,000 in, in November of each year. Uh, the check this year was 278, but we'll call it 270 for the purposes of, of being somewhat conservative in the estimate. We will get one of those in November of '22. We will get one of those in November of '23. That brings the total in that fund to $952,384.69. We are 500-plus days from getting those trucks. 500 days is the middle of December of 2023. So we'll have 952,000. We'll spend 929,000, and then we'll get 180,000 back as part of the grant.
Greg, thank you for following up on that because I was wanting to ask you to make sure that the numbers and the financial end was, was clear.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for following up and bringing it back to the board.
Good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Greg?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving right along. We're down to the sun comptroller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item I have is number 43, which is approval of the budget amendments and the inter-fund cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
The next items, 43 and 44, is for the approval of the general claims docket and the payroll docket.
Move. Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Aye, we have item 46 for the planning and zoning commission, per dim.
Yes, sir.
Move.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Banks, second by Ms. Jones. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 47. Mr. Griffin?
43?
Number 47. So item number 47 is approval of the feet core claim docket.
Move for approval. Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right. Thank you.
Yes? All right. Thank you.
Running lot?
Running lot.
Yeah, nothing was present.
All right, Mr. Running. Hi, Sheriff.
I only have one item, and that is the inmate mill log for the month of June. I'll provide this to your clerk if you could just acknowledge it for the minutes.
Move. Smoke knowledge. All right. Motion by Carl, second by Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Running lot now, old business.
Uh, we do. I've got one item.
Now, we got, you got one old business?
I've got one old business item.
All right.
And then there's one executive session.
One executive session.
Item litigation, but.
All right.
Oh, really? Executive session?
This, this discussion could be as long or as short as you care to make it.
Let's do the short version.
It involves sinkholes in Gluckstat, Mr., Mr. Baxter.
Oh, no.
All right.
You should have.
But we made a lot of, we made a lot of progress now. At the last meeting, we discussed whether in the MOU between the county and Gluckstat could be amended to repair a sinkhole. And my response was yes. If the sinkhole impaired, uh, if the sinkhole impaired, uh, the flow of traffic, you know, that would cover an MOU that we have with Gluckstat right now, where we repair potholes. So to me, it's just a matter of writing in a paragraph that included sinkholes. I said, yes. Then we talked about whether if we repaired it, would we need to be reimbursed? And we took a lot of time discussing that. And I said, no, because you can't do that. There's gotta be some reimbursement some way or another. All right. So the way we left it is that I was directed to resource issue along with the administrator. If we had to go to the state audit, we would. We've done all of that. In fact, we had a meeting last week with the mayor of Gluckstat, the city clerk of Gluckstat, John Scanlon, the lawyer for Gluckstat, myself, Mr. Higgins-Balton, and Tim, all in the room discussing this issue. And I'm glad we did because there are things that came to light that we were not familiar with. The whole story, um, everyone didn't know the whole story. Everyone knew some parts of the story. Here's the story. That sinkhole is not in the road. It, it's not in the road at all. It's on the right of way. But the damage is caused by a pipe that busted below the sidewalk. So it's not really something that's appropriate for the MOU that we have in place now. So, so even though I said we can edit the MOU that includes sinkholes, that was to be the flow of traffic, and this does not. It's a pipe that busted. It's our, it's our old pipe. You know, when you, when you, when you build up a new city, it's like buying a used car. You know, so that pipe, that's our pipe. But now it's their pipe. And it busted. And the water drains, uh, and it's a problem. So, so there are actually three sinkholes, and none of the three are within the roadway. So it, it's not appropriate for us to use our MOU to repair something that's, uh, not, not something that was envisioned and beach traffic in the road. It's a drainage issue, not a road issue. So that's, that's number one. I, so I was, the answer I gave is the answer I gave, uh, which was correct, uh, but it doesn't relate to this. Secondly, reimbursement, it, uh, I still stand on the statement I made that we can't do something away from the city unless it's reimbursed. However, we have a unique situation between us and Gluckstat. In the road MOU, there's a section that says, since Gluckstat does not have a road department, uh, we will be Gluckstat's road department. And to satisfy the reimbursement issue, all of the avant-garde taxes collected by Gluckstat that they attribute to mileage for roads, if they did a road department, comes to us. that they attribute to millage for roads, if they did a road department, comes to us. We collect one hundred percent of all the millage from the city clerk, comes to Cape Base, and we keep it. And then that's the reimbursement mechanism that we use to fix roads in Gluckstat, and it's working very well. All right. But they're reimbursable for roads and not drainage. We do not ever drainage MOU with Gluckstat. So, we met, and we went through the law, we went through all of it, we discussed it, and everybody's agreed on a suggestion that came up. And if I'm saying anything wrong, Greg, he's in a crack because he was there. Here's what I've suggested. It's quick, it's efficient, it's legal, and we can do it now. All right. What I think we ought to do to satisfy this sinkhole issue, well, the city of Gluckstat is already in the process of hiring a private vendor, utility constructors to fix this, and I've seen the estimate, it's thirty thousand dollars to fix three sinkholes. What I think we ought to do is, since we are responsible for collecting their money for road repair, even though this isn't road repair, we still have their money. So, what I think we ought to do is reach into our fund whereby resides their money and give them thirty thousand dollars of their money. So, that'll be an action from you just saying, we want to remit the city of Gluckstat thirty thousand dollars now. It's up to the city of Gluckstat to have a meeting and repurpose the thirty thousand dollars from roads to sinkholes. That's up to them. They can do that in a nanosecond, and then they can go ahead and do this, they can do it on their own, and we've taken care of their problem, we're still legal, it's their money, we're giving them their money, and all you have to do is direct us to do that.
Well, I think if Greg's on board with that, I don't have any problem with giving Gluckstat their money back.
Please be clear.
Yeah. Because he got state audit reimbursement.
The idea behind a donation is you don't have anything creating the obligation to pay it. That is most basic, that's a donation. And if we do something for free for a city, we don't have necessarily anything to create the obligation. Now, there is no harm in refunding their road taxes to them. In fact, there's an attorney general's opinion that's pretty much on point as far as refunding cash to a city. There is nothing wrong with it. Perfectly fine from both an accounting and apparently a legal perspective, and it will help, it will definitely benefit the city of Gluckstat to be able to repair those sinkholes.
So, what's the exact amount? What is the motion need to read?
Thirty thousand.
It was slightly more than thirty thousand. I was pulling it up.
So, while y'all are pulling that up, the pipe that's causing this has been repaired?
Nope.
What are we going to do about that?
That would be both no.
Oh, this? Okay, okay, got it, got it.
Well, the invoice doesn't necessarily have a total, or the proposal doesn't have a total. Nine, nine, twenty. Yes, I do.
Why don't you say the low two quotes of those three locations?
If we're just refunding them, it doesn't matter.
My suggestion would be for this board to make a motion to authorize us to refund the amount of the repair of the three sinkholes to the city of Gluckstat so that we don't have to necessarily have an exact amount. We have the cash in the fund for this.
You're going to need an up to number. You said about thirty. I mean, you could make it up to thirty-four thousand or thirty-five.
Forty thousand.
Forty or something like that. You just can't leave us on them.
It's, yeah.
It was thirty.
It's nine thousand, eleven thousand, and nine thousand, but there's change after each one, so thirty-three is fine.
Up to a certain number.
I make a motion for reimbursement up to thirty-five thousand.
All right, second.
All right, motion is second question.
Yeah, I do, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who keeping count on the tab on making sure how much money they got in there?
The road department keeps records, and our comptroller, Ms. White, actually spoke with the road department, but they're able to query their work orders to find which ones take place within the city limits of Gluckstat.
That's kind of where I was headed too, is that.
Yeah, how much money they got? And when you take that thirty thousand out, or thirty-four thousand out, how much they go ahead and left?
Plenty.
Come to the hot seat or hot stand.
Plenty.
But, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Because I want to follow up with a couple things, and I'm in favor of doing this.
Yeah, I am too.
But I do have a couple questions. No, I think Paul asked you a question first.
The question is the amount of money that been collected in Gluckstat, how much have they spent? Make sure that if they take their thirty thousand on it, they don't go into red.
They won't.
They won't?
They won't. Okay, so.
What is that number, though?
Okay, so we have collected about a hundred and seventy thousand, and according to the information we received from the road department, we spent about four thousand.
Four?
Okay, and that's what we need to know because when someone made the statement of their money, you know, each city has their money that we don't necessarily give back to them this way, and that's, you know, that's what I'm really wanting to kind of make sure I understand when you say their money. If we're going to start giving back the city their money, I mean, you have to really watch what you say.
Mike, this is a little bit different situation with Gluckstat and the money they give us. It's totally different.
Yes. And we have a MOU with Gluckstat that expires September thirty, twenty-twenty-three. So, we got a little bit more than a year to go with this. And remind you, Mr. Griffin, to ease your anxiety on this, we get money from them every fiscal year, so it's like a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars that we'll be getting twenty-twenty-three. And it also goes in our fund to do road repair. So, I think we okay on the money and the law and the process. I was uneasy about the reimbursement, but reimbursement's settled now because we're giving them back their half of the money. It's up to them to repurpose it for sinkholes. That's up to them, but it's their money they gave us, so they can put it in the sinkhole fund.
So, Mike, when this MOU expires, they'll go on the same program as Rizland, Madison, and Flora?
Exactly.
Yeah, and no one else here, Mike? Just to make me to fully understand, and someone might be watching us live, other cities' money is collected, and we give them all their money back.
We give them money through your road plan.
Yeah.
And a road plan usually is in a local where we'll give them money back, and you will pay for fifth percent of the cost of improving a road, and they pay for fifth percent of the cost of road. That's what you do every year, that's pretty normal, and we be doing that with Gluckstat when they get a road department and when they're more stable as far as standing up a new city. The only difference is that we get all of their money. We don't get half of their money, we get all of their money.
Yeah.
And they don't have thirty thousand dollars now. So, we saying we're giving you part of your road money that you have to repurpose from your road millage to your sinkhole fund or whatever they want to do, but that's their issue.
Yeah.
We're giving them their money. That's it.
I just wanted the public, especially the cities, to know exactly what we doing. We ain't doing nothing special for Gluckstat right here.
We are doing something special because they are special in the sense of their new city. But it's their money. We're not appropriating our money for their uses. It's their money.
Yeah.
That we're keeping.
You know, actually, when you look at it from that way, and I appreciate the explanation to it that you said, actually, we should look and see how much we actually should give them a portion of their money compared to what we give to the other cities.
That's true.
So, we should go back and look at that percentage and give that to them.
So, Mr. Baxter, the way we go forward is Mr. Scanlon was in that meeting, since he's there at council, asked him to draft, you know, whatever sentence he wants to draft about how their money's going to be repurposed, but that doesn't stop you from directing this action be done to the CFO to give them up to thirty-five thousand dollars back.
All right, who made the motion?
Would you like me to read what I have?
Carl made the motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Trey. Any other discussion?
I'd like to hear the motion I've got.
Yep.
I've got authorized Madison County to refund a monetary amount for repair of three sinkholes within the city of Gluckstat not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right. From funds collected from Gluckstat and held and managed by Madison County.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Yeah, I said all that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Griffin, I would also just follow up with that. I would ask the comptroller and the administrator to look and see how much more money should be given to Gluckstat under this scenario as compared to what we do with the city, the other cities.
That a motion? Is that a motion?
No, no, I'm just going to ask them to look and send out to the board because there's a certain percentage we give back to each city each year. And so, you know, to treat them the way the other cities are now, you know, we need to look at that.
All right. Any other old business? If not, we'll get ready to go into the second session. Motion by.
Second the motion, go on the floor.
Trey, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. I guess it'll be.